Let me say good afternoon. Good evening, good to us. My apologies if you can't hear me. My apologies if you can't hear me. Well, I lost my voice last night. And I'm moving with whatever we have left. We have representatives here from Goodwill. And we're so happy to have them in our community in a very, very big way. I'm gonna bring them up right now to make their presentation. Come up and give a few names, because I'm just visiting up. And then we'll open up our meeting.
As key mayor and council members, please allow me to introduce myself. My name is Ron Mayering. I'm the chief operator for Goodwill Industries, presently located in Tulsa. And first of all, I would like to thank you. A couple of weeks ago, I attended a state of the city luncheon with some great food and some great speeches. So I'm here to give you, I know this is your last meeting, and I'm here to give you great news. We have leased 2410 Shawnee Road. It's the old Goodwill, sorry, the old Walmart building, a part of the old Walmart building, where Olic's is, and the gym, and then right next door. And we're making a big investment there between the owner of the mall and ourselves. We're hoping to open a store, about 15,000 square foot out of the 30, a career center, and a donation center. The lease is signed hopefully sometime in January. Work is gonna start, and by either May or June, we're trying to open a store. A local contractor is gonna do all the work for us, a contractor out of Muskogee. I forgot his last name, but his first name is Billy. So I apologize for that. And just to explain a little bit about Goodwill, because a lot of, often people think Goodwill is one national organization. It's really 154 independent Goodwills. We're an organization that's on the bottom line. But each Goodwill is financially responsible for their own territory and has an independent board of directors. Maybe about two decades ago, there was a Goodwill, I think, here out of Muskogee. But that Goodwill, for whatever reason, is no longer here. We acquired the territory, and we're hoping to expand into the city and work with a lot of the community members to find out what is it the city needs. You know, we have a lot of programs that we make available, and Sabrina is gonna talk to you about that a little bit.
Good afternoon, mayor and council members. We appreciate being here today. And the reason why we appreciate it is because we need to listen to know what is it that Muskogee needs for your training? And so we're here to gather information. So you're gonna see us here often as we prepare to be here in your city full time, all the time. But we need to hear from your community, this community, who will now be our community, right? And understand exactly what the training needs might be. We do offer trainings at Goodwill in the city of Tulsa, but that may not be the same training needs that you need here in the Muskogee area. At that meeting, we were able to meet some of the members of your community here, and we plan to work together. I've got a meeting already established in March upcoming up, so that we can find out exactly what Muskogee needs. So we thank you for this opportunity to talk today and to talk about our training programs. Again, computer classes and forklift training and all the different training programs, but what is it that Muskogee needs? That's what we're here to find out, and we'll be doing investigation to figure that out. So thank you again.
Thank you all. Any questions for our guests tonight? All right, welcome to Muskogee. The parade committee has given us a trophy, and we're so grateful. We are the 2023 Muskogee Homecoming Parade Best Commercial Flow. And we're so grateful for that. Thank you, staff, for having taken the leadership to be certain that we're represented in all of our parties. Let's take a group photo. Somebody with a camera with a lot of good lenses. My kids at school told me don't use iPhone 8.
Ready? One, two, three. Okay, one more with our seal. One, two, three.
Thank you, bro. Thank you. I had an iPhone 8 for a long time. My kids laughed at me, so I got rid of it. We were now called to order a special call meeting in the Muskogee Municipal Authority for December 11, 2023. Let us stand for the invocation. God, we thank you for this night. Father, we pray your blessing upon us, oh God, that as we are in between now and the parade, celebrating our state champions, Father, that we will move the speed that you've given us while taking care of your business at the same time. God, we're so grateful for what you've done for our children at the high school. And I pray that that championship spirit will bleed over into our community. God, that we may all know that we are champions according to you. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen. Look to the flag. Attention, salute, pledge.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party's fans. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me say before we start, one of my goals is to try to get us out by 5:45 so we could be where we need to be for the parade. So we're gonna talk a little, vote a lot, and get things going. Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Whoos.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
Pearl Lamboyati Craig.
Here.
Patrick Cale.
Here.
Thank you. Item number one.
Consider approval of MMA claims for the month ending November 30, 2023, or take other necessary actions.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, you do have the claims before you. Recommend approval and happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Miller on the claims?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second?
No.
I heard a second. I hear a motion.
I move for approval.
Now, we have a motion and a second, or a second and a motion. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl Lamboyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number two.
Consider approval of resolution number 2968 of the Muskogee Municipal Authority authorizing a loan from the Oklahoma Water Resources Board in the total aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $82 million, approving the issuance of a promissory note in the total aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $82 million, secured by a pledge of revenues and authorizing its execution, designating a local trustee, approving and authorizing the execution of a trust agreement, approving and authorizing the execution of a loan agreement, approving and authorizing the execution of a security agreement, ratifying and confirming a lease agreement and operation and maintenance contract as amended pertaining to the leasing of the city of Muskogee water and sanitary sewer systems to the borrower, approving and authorizing the modification of the security with respect to certain outstanding indebtedness of the borrower, specifically adding one-half of 1% of sales tax revenue to the security pledge, and approving and authorizing the execution of any and all necessary documents, including but not limited to a sales tax agreement, an amended parity agreement, an amendment to the general bond indenture, and amendments to loan agreements and amended security agreement, approving and authorizing a note to purchase agreement, excuse me, approving various covenants, approving and authorizing application to the Oklahoma Water Resources Board, approving and authorizing a professional services agreement with its group LLC, M. Municipal Finance Services Incorporated, approving and authorizing payment of fees and expenses and containing other provisions relating thereto, or take other necessary action.
Thank you, Ms. Tammy, for reading the 11th amendment, or 11th, another book in the Bible. Mr. Miller.
Well, I will, I will explain that in, hopefully, about the same amount of time. I do thank our city clerk, who does a wonderful job. This is a project that is really, literally about 70 years in the making, and the council's been working on it for about a couple of years to get to where we are today. City Council's adopted a strategic plan, and one of the top priority is infrastructure improvements. And the city council has directed staff to develop a long-term solution for two infrastructure problems the city is facing. One is the replacement of our wastewater treatment plant originally built in the 1950s. The other is the replacement of water meters. And this proposed action and resolution addresses both of these issues. Our sewer plant was originally built in the 1950s using 1950s technologies, and it's had periodic upgrades since its construction. But changing environmental standards have become increasingly hard to meet. The plant currently uses a trickling filter system that was once common, but we are currently the only sewer plant in the state that uses this outdated technology. The State Department of Environmental Quality has issued a consent order for us to upgrade and replace the plant. But even if the state hadn't issued the consent order, another reason to replace the plant is to raise our standards and capacity for future economic development projects and growth in our community. This will be a significant investment by our community, as well as a way for this council to make a difference for generations to come. Water and sewer are fee-for-service offerings in the city of Muskogee, and so as such, our policy is that the citizens who use the services should pay for the cost of those services, which allows us to use our tax revenues for services that we don't charge the public for, like our police and fire protection. To fund the improvements, city staff and partners have conducted a study and have proposed rate increases that cover the cost of these necessary improvements for both the water meter replacement and the new wastewater treatment plant, as ordered by the state. The rates being proposed are similar to what other communities have and would be phased in, in total, over a course of three years, beginning approximately a year from now. We are asking for the vote now because the state has said that we need to show progress. We've come up with a plan that they have accepted to begin our wastewater treatment plant, and the first step in that process is showing that we have the funding to replace it. And that is what is before you today. We have a lot of people here that can help answer questions. They've said we've been working on this for about two years with the council, 70 years since our last sewer plant, and we're excited to do this project that's gonna have good ramifications for economic development and that this council can leave a legacy for generations to come. I do recommend approval for this, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions from the body?
Mr. Mayor, may I be working on?
Mr. McGee.
Yes, I was just talking to the gentleman there. If he, in this, you doesn't see the loan has a interest rate, and that's one of the things that most people are not used to, borrowing money with an interest rate being implemented in the beginning. So I'd like him to explain that process so that the public can know what's going on there. Second thing is that you touched on, Mr. Miller, the urgency for this to take place. If you can be, explain that, where the citizens understand that this is something that's mandated by the state of Oklahoma, that we must get this done. And then the other thing that I had a question about is that you just mentioned about the sales tax to be used in other places, but in this modification that we have here, we see that we have a 50 cent tax revenue as part of the structure of this loan, if that can be explained, because I don't recall what's going on with that in specific. And then the lastly is that I asked him, was the percentage rate that we paid them, was that the standard for municipalities? And then what was the service, additional service fee for?
So, yes, if I may ask, our council from the Public Finance Group, Alan Brooks and Nate Ellis, are here and would be happy to address those questions.
Well, let's, let's take them in order, okay? Why do we establish or move forward to the transaction? Is that known exactly what the interest rate is? Let's take the question. The resolution approves an interest rate not to exceed 6.5%, okay? The last transaction that the Oklahoma Water Resources Board did of this nature a couple of months ago, the rate for a transaction like this, on that transaction, it would have been about 5.21%. That's what we've used in our projections as we have worked through this process. The Oklahoma Water Resources Board goes out and they sell bonds, okay? But they sell bonds understanding that there are people that are gonna take the proceeds of those bonds or borrow those monies. They won't go out and sell those bonds unless they know that somebody did it, and at what rate they would take them up to, all right? They're gonna sell those bonds at the lowest possible rate they can, all right? That's what they do as a state agency, and Muskogee would be one of the beneficiaries of the bond issue. But what they can't do is go sell the bonds. They have a specific day that they would go into the marketplace. We anticipate right now that that would be January 24th would be the day that they would, what we call, price their bonds or sell their bonds. They've gotta know when they're selling those bonds that the people that have applied for the money are gonna take them. So we establish, as long as you can give us a rate at least 6.5% or under, then Muskogee is agreeing to take the proceeds. And they're gonna sell them at the lowest possible rate they can. Last time we priced, it was about 5.21%. If we're gonna price those bonds today, we've had a little rundown in interest rates, and that rate might be, if we did it today, maybe be in the 5% range, okay? But we don't know what the rate's gonna be again when we get out and they're ready to sell their bonds. But they have to know that Muskogee has approved that, and that's the way, whether you're Oklahoma City, or Tulsa, or Muskogee, or a very small community, that's the way their program works. So we have to be committed to that, and that's why we agree on not to exceed interest rate today. Does that answer that?
Yeah, that answered them, yes, sir.
Second question, half percent sales tax. We have proposed to pledge the half percent sales tax because you have, there are covenants in the documents with Oklahoma Water Resources Board, and we have to agree that we'll show that you have net revenues available. In other words, your water and sewer revenues after you pay expenses, and any other revenue pledged has to be at least 1.4 times your debt service in the highest year, okay? We, we only need to generate enough revenue to pay one times debt service. In other words, we need to generate enough revenue to pay the debt service, not necessarily to pay 1.4 times the debt service. But we have to show that the revenue pledged meets that 1.4 requirement. By pledging a half cent sales tax, we want, we didn't have to raise the rates as much. In other words, if we don't pledge a sales tax, we'd have to raise the rates to a level greater than what we're proposing here to show that cushion.
Gotcha.
So the, the sales tax is the cushion, okay? But it's not contemplated that any of that sales tax would be used to pay debt service, all right? It's, it's there, again, as collateral.
Gotcha.
Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Third question was, oh, urgency. Did the city manager speak to her to question in sufficient detail?
I think, I think he did touch on it. If you could just be more, you know, it's just that the state is requiring this to happen.
The state is requiring you to do it. You've already had one fine that you've paid. Those, those fines don't get less, they get more as you move forward. You've got the only trickling filter plant left in the state. Unfortunately, your circumstances were such that they came out and looked at your facilities at a bad time, but bottom line, you're not in compliance with their requirements, and they're gonna make sure that Muskogee moves forward with this. Where they, I mean, essentially, the fine is a tool that, I call it a detention getter, but it forces components ultimately. And so you'd rather take your dollars that you're generating with revenues and pay those as debt service, or make, make an investment in your system versus paying them to DQ.
Makes sense.
That's, that's, that answer. Can I ask a question in terms of, are the fees normal?
Yes, is that, is that normal for?
That would be, I mean, one, we do a huge percentage of this work across the state. So what we try to do is we try to make sure that we charge clients on similar transactions, similar fees. I told the city manager, I don't want him to call another community we work with and find out that we charge them a significantly lower fee, or vice versa. Again, we try to be consistent with what we charge, and this is, it's reasonable in the circumstances.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your answer.
I have a little clarification question. On the half a percent sales tax?
Yes, sir.
We're pledging that, not raising that.
That is correct. That is an existing half.
That we're pledging the existing, not raising and increasing.
That is absolutely correct. This is an existing tax you collect, and you can still budget it for the things that you would typically budget that tax for, but it's being pledged as collateral on this transaction. You couldn't turn around and pledge it something totally different as collateral. You've tied it up in that regard, but you can use it for budget purposes, what you would normally use a half cent sales tax for. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Other questions? Let me say that, and Mr. Miller, Mr. Stewart can attest, that several of us made several attempts over the last two or three years trying to work with ODEQ to be certain that we had grace, we had mercy, and I'm confident we're at a point where we've exhausted those means. We did everything that we could when we could do it, even to the point where I had almost threatened not to sign the consent decree at one time, and the good people at ODEQ said that probably wouldn't be a good idea. So we've gone down the path of all we can do in increasing our capacity in water in all areas. It's something that we need to do now more than ever. So thank you for your comments. Other questions? What's the pleasure of the body?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl Lamboyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Next item. Oh, that's it. We're adjourned. Go to where we're. We're now called to order a special agenda for the Muskogee City Council for December 11, 2023. Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Whoos.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
Lamboyati Craig.
Here.
Patrick Cale.
Here.
Thank you. Item number one.
Consider approval of claims for all city departments November 4, 2023, through December 1, 2023, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, so we did have a purchasing committee met earlier. I don't know if the purchasing chair would like to make a report.
Yes, the purchasing committee did meet, and we approved the claims, and I move for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl Lamboyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number two.
Consider approval of resolution number 2969 of the city of Muskogee, Oklahoma, approving action taken by the Muskogee Municipal Authority and resolution number 2968 authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery of a promissory note of the authority to the Oklahoma Water Resources Board, ratifying and confirming a lease agreement and operation and maintenance contract as amended by and between the city and the authority pertaining to the leasing of the city of Muskogee water and sanitary sewer systems to the authority, authorizing the modification of the security with respect to certain outstanding indebtedness of the Muskogee Municipal Authority, specifically adding one-half of 1% of sales tax revenue to the security pledge, approving and authorizing the execution of a sales tax agreement and constraining other provisions related thereto, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller, if you don't mind, since we've heard this presentation, I'm gonna take a, this chair, and motion to approve, consistent with other presentations contiguous to this item.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl Lamboyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number three.
Consider approval of resolution number 2962, adopting an amendment to Appendix A of the Muskogee City Code pertaining to schedule of fees and charges for attached list, amending the water and sewer rate charges for base rates inside and outside customers, delaying the effective date of future increases on all rates in accordance with the Consumer Price Index, all urban consumers for Region 6, Dallas-Fort Worth, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller, I'm gonna ask the same as in item number two. Since we've had discussion on this item, my motion's gonna be to approve, consistent with previous presentations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions? Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl Lamboyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number four.
Consider approval of resolution number 2963, which directs monthly water and sewer base rate increases as contemplated in resolution number 2962, with the funds to be retained by the Muskogee Municipal Authority, and that use of these funds be restricted to the Muskogee Municipal Authority for meter replacement project and loan repayment of wastewater treatment plant and utilized for the purposes outlined therein, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller, I'm giving the same suggestion that this item is consistent with other items related to the water plant, and I'm gonna make the motion to approve based on those presentations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions? Roll call.
Cale.
Yes.
Lamboyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. We've already heard from Goodwill, we've struck number five in the number six.
Consider approval of resolution 2967, amending the city of Muskogee municipal budget for fiscal year 2023, 2024, providing for the transfer of excess general fund revenue from fiscal year 2022, 2023 into the stabilization account and special project fund in accordance with City Code 2-552, providing for the transfer of funds from special projects fund to Civic Center Enterprise Fund, providing transfer authority or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, thank you, mayor, members of council, and I did, I will take your admonishment earlier that we have a deadline, I will do it quickly, but this is a day that we are excited about every year, appropriate the funds from the prior year along the lines of our ordinance, how we have really a model financially that other cities look at across the state. Real quickly, we're gonna talk about American Rescue Plan, Special Project Fund, and, and move that forward. Here is just a quick reminder that we originally received 6.5 million dollars from the federal government directly to the city of Muskogee from the Rescue Plan. We have about a million dollars' worth that is unobligated. Unobligated meaning this council has designated projects, but we don't necessarily have a timeline or a project identified to pay those out. Those were specific to the Southwest Zone, financial incentives, and housing infrastructure. We have spent some of the housing infrastructure money, but we have that million dollars that has to be obligated by about this time next year and must be out the door by 2026. So to remove that artificial deadline, we're proposing to move those into the Special Project Fund and to use ARPA funds for a project that we otherwise would have used Special Project Fund money for. So, that is, and that project is our Civic Center boiler project. We've talked about this with the council before. We do have a temporary boiler operating our Civic Center right now, and there's agenda items on later today to get a long-term replacement for the heat and air, at least phase one of that project. And so, we're proposing that we use that ARPA money for that and then additional money to come out of the Special Project Fund this year for that particular project. I'll get to that. Just a quick background, our mid-year budget adjustment. It is a review of our financial performance of the previous year, and then we allocate our carryover fund based off those council priorities. Again, for the last several years, we've made sure to make sure that we are budgeting our expenses less than our revenue. We don't try and use our savings account for operational purposes, and the council established an ordinance for these two purposes. When we get to this time of year, we can fund the revenue, the reserve, our reserve fund for emergencies, and then we can use the money to fund one-time projects that fit the strategic plan. And so, the best practice for a general fund reserve account is at least 20%, but 20% to 30%. Our ordinance says we had to save aggressively to get to a 20% number, which we did last year, and I'm very proud of. And this year, we get to 21% by following our ordinance by reallocating this amount of money, more than $4.9 million that we had of revenue over expenses last fiscal year. Following our methodology laid out in ordinance, it gets us to 21%, takes $910,000 as pictured here. Remainder goes to the Special Project Fund of $4 million allocated by strategic priorities, and we have tried to put these together based off of feedback from the council through the year and even last year during the budget time, when we said we're not sure we have the money to do certain things. So, here's the money for the Civic Center boiler, chiller, and controllers. There's additional money. The Civic Center, we won't get into the details, but started the year with the balance in the red. The council said they wanted to even that up at the beginning of this, or at this time, so that they had a full-year budget, so that number regards that for them. This is an allocation. Mayor has told us that ODOT is going to bypass and build the seven-lane highway through south of Oakmogee, and we're excited about that, but they also say we need to do a project ourselves to update the utilities and move them out of the way of their project that's estimated at $1 million. I don't want to try and find $1 million out of our street budget next year to do that, and this is an opportune time to set that money as a one-time expenditure, which is what this fund does very well. Council members had some concerns about some of the aging equipment at our Hatbox Sports Complex. Our staff out there put together a $50,000 budget to replace a couple of mowers and additional equipment, so that's what that request is, swimming fitness remodel. We have about $150,000 that we need in addition to the originally budgeted CIP money for the swimming fitness area. Again, we, I'm going through these relatively quickly. We have subject matter experts if we need some more details, but this is going to expand our swimming, our fitness area of the swimming fitness center, and so this goes addition to CIP fund. We have some older equipment at Semitangula Cat Box in Elliott Park that need replacement. Again, one-time funding, that didn't fit into our regular current year budget, but now that we have it, it's a good, a good way to make those parks better and safer for children that use them. We've talked about our backlog in facilities maintenance, and this is a request for funding to address major priorities. Roofs at the facilities building, Lee Rivers Museum and the Roxy, that's a budget item of $500,000, $550,000 that should be able to get all of those, and then $400,000 to put aside for other projects that are coming up, because we know, for instance, the Civic Center heat and air project, this was just phase one, and the second phase will be maybe even twice as much as what this is. So, this gives us an opportunity to address those needs as they come up. Your city clerk has asked for some new software in the middle of budget year for open records act requests, and it's a very good request and timely. And then lastly, something that the council has asked us to do in the past is a stipend for our city employees who worked throughout the entire fiscal year of 2023 that ended June 30th and that are still with us today, and that is the cost of a $1,000 stipend for those employees that are still with us at this time that worked the entire fiscal year. And as you know, that number doesn't add up to 1,000. That's because that includes our costs, including taxes and whatnot. So, employees will have some taxes taken out, but that's a $1,000 stipend that we can give employees at the council's direction very generously to do so, and if we were able to do that, we will be able to get them those checks. If the council so approves, we may be able to do that by as early as tomorrow, pending some other things on the agenda tonight. Just a quick summary, the reserve fund goes up to 21%, the highest it's been in a long, long time that we can find in our system. And we allocate that Special Project Fund of over $4 million almost entirely to those two high council priorities of infrastructure and facilities and employee morale. So, that is, that is a proposal that we put forward, and we've had some discussions. We are excited about the opportunities to take this money and address council priorities, and we do recommend approval and are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. I think that all of us have received copies of this same presentation. What's the pleasure of this body?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Other discussions? Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl Lamboyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number seven.
Consider approval of the lowest and best bid in the amount of $573,500 from ACO and Construction for the Swim and Fitness Center remodel project is recommended by KKT Architects Incorporated, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Reeves?
I'm sorry. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good evening. Yes, we have been working on this project for about a year. As you mentioned, this evening, allocations that are needed. We are excited. This is a renovation project, making improvements to our existing building, which we believe is important, and we'll make some improvements that make this look better. So, this is our final step to get started, and are just asking for your approval, and I can answer any questions if.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second on item number seven. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl Lamboyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number eight.
Consider approval of the recommendation from GH2 Architects to award the lowest and best bid for the Muskogee Civic Center HVAC remodel to SLIGAR Mechanical in the amount of $1,072,000, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Reeves?
Yes, as the manager mentioned, this project will be the replacement of the boilers and chillers at the Civic Center. Currently, none of the items mentioned are functional at the Civic Center. We are currently using a temporary boiler to heat the facility with at this time, and staff does recommend approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. Any questions?
Move for approval.
Second.
Here are no questions with a motion in a second. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl Lamboyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number nine.
Consider approval of resolution number 2970, receiving a petition for creation of an assessment district directing a registered professional engineer to prepare preliminary plans, specifications, assessment plaits, and an estimate of cost for the proposed Walnut Creek Assessment District for the Walnut Creek Edition Phase Two, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, the council has worked tirelessly to try and improve opportunities for Muskogee residents to have access to housing. Earlier this year, the council authorized an agreement with the housing developer for the second phase of Walnut Creek. Part of that agreement was a commitment from the city to create an assessment district to fund public infrastructure in that area. This is a legal process. It takes a few different resolutions by the council. The important thing to know, this is not an incentive on behalf of the city to the developer. This is basically the people that own the property saying, "We want to pay for these infrastructure developments ourself, and we have to facilitate that process." So, this was part of our development agreement that we entered into earlier, and this is just implementation of that. Our friends Nate and Allen are here to address any questions, because they're going to help us implement this as well, but this is an opportunity for us to fulfill our obligation to create this special assessment district and allow them to build those 80 new houses.
Questions?
Do we have a motion? I'm made for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Here are no questions. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl Lamboyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number 10.
Consider approval of the repurposing of a one-time funding in the amount of $27,000 for the event celebrating the Martin Luther King Jr. Community Center's 50th anniversary in 2024, or take other necessary action.
Representatives Reed and Whoos.
Thank you. So, it was in the year of 1974. That little location on Third Street became Muskogee Martin Luther King Center. So, here we are in the year 2024. We're knocking on the door of 2024, and we're going to celebrate 50 years of accomplishments of our Muskogee Martin Luther King Center. Actually, our theme is honoring the past, appreciating our present, and anticipating our future. The Muskogee Martin Luther King Trust Authority, Wayne Johnson, chairman, has appointed two representatives, Dr. Tracy Whoos, as well as Tish Dawkins, to oversee events that will commemorate the 50-year celebration, in which we will kick off during Martin Luther King Weekend of 2024. We will kick off with a luncheon, have invited a keynote speaker to come in for that event. In addition to that, on the 15th of January, we will have our annual Dr. Martin Luther King Free Pancake Breakfast. We will have our Martin Luther King Parade, our Martin Luther King Worship Service, our Martin Luther King After Party, Kids' Zone, as well as just a day of celebration honoring the birthday of Dr. Martin Luther King, as well as once again celebrating our 50th year in operation in the city of Muskogee. In the month of March, we will continue our celebration with the Gala Fair, and while the month of March, it was seven years ago during spring break that we moved into our facility. When we built that facility, some said that facility was too big, some said that facility would never meet the needs of our community, and we are here to report that we have outgrown the facilities in which we are in. One of the heartbreaking things that we have is we turn away over 80, 90 kids every after school season, every summer season, we have to turn kids away. So, within this process, we are also going to be unveiling what our future will look like. We have some future development plans that we are going to be presenting during these celebrations, and so, saying all that to Harry to quickly say that in the year 2024, we're going to celebrate what Muskogee has. Muskogee has the only Dr. Martin Luther King Center in the state of Oklahoma. We have a lot to be proud of, and so, those are just three of the events. In the summertime, we are planning a music fest. In the fall, we're coming back with another event. So, this money is money that was left over. If you remember, we set aside money as the city of Muskogee turned 150 years old. We said we wanted to do some commemorations to bring the community together, and this year, we had a rodeo as well as a city where I picnic, and so, these are the leftover funds that will help us roll over the seed into the celebrations that we have planned for the year 2024. And that is our ask to help us in this great celebration of honoring our past, appreciating our present, and anticipating our future.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Questions? Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl Lamboyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number 11.
Consider approval for the city manager to submit a proposal for funding from the Indian Nation Council of Governments State Energy Program and Recovery and Reinvestment Act revolving loan fund, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, what you have before you is an opportunity to participate in a program that would allow us to borrow money at about 1% interest for energy conservation programs such as the needed upgrades of the heat and air system at the Civic Center, for instance. And so, we've talked about how we're going to fund those projects. This is a great way to do that at a 1% interest rate. I think being able to borrow money now at 1% and doing a project as soon as possible is very financially prudent, considering the prices are going to go up maybe as fast as we can save money to do a project otherwise. So, this is a project, a program we are not normally eligible to apply for, but our neighbors at Incog said that they would obtain an offer from us. Due to their deadlines, we wanted to hurry and make that opportunity available to the council to see whether they'd be willing to let us do that.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any questions from this body?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl Lamboyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number 12.
Consider approval to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute an agreement with Muskogee Public Schools for use of the former RAA buildings to house an esports center, teen center, and youth volunteer corps in temporary use for the swim and fitness remodel project, or take other necessary action.
Thank you. Ma'am, you have the floor.
There is a lot in this agenda we are excited about. The esports will be completely new center, an opportunity for the community. Parks Department is excited about it. We think that it makes sense to try to, when we're looking for a new space for that, we've had continued conversations about the teen center and YVC and potential relocation of those programs, and we had a meeting with the school. So, looking for an esports facility then turned into more conversations, and the best location is the former Raw building. The school is agreeable. We've had meetings with them, discussions back and forth, and there's a shared use agreement, and then some of the buildings are available that would be exclusive for that would be exclusive for the esports. So that, it just all worked out really well when we had conversations. They will probably be presented next month at school board on this project as well and then have the opportunity to have any further discussions if needed. But we want your approval tonight. Is the presentation.
It's in the, the presentation is not appear to be loaded, but it is in your packet. Brooke did very, I don't think we appear to have it loaded, but it is a very thorough packet presentation in your packet about a good collaborative effort for us. The school district is giving us good feedback on how we can work together to offer a community family entertainment option.
And let me say to all of us, this is consistent with the memorandum of understanding that we signed as a city between Muskogee Public Schools and Hilldale Public Schools that whenever the opportunity presented itself for us to work together, we would do that. So thank you for your efforts. Move to approve. We have a motion in the second. Questions?
Is this just temporary housing for these three projects or is this a long-term thing? Our readiness says a year, two, or two or three years.
What we ask is that this could be a two to three year, that for it to be, I think, a good opportunity for us, two to three years, a minimum makes the most sense. I actually identified the years through 2026, so we would like for them to be agreeable to that. And then, then should it, you know, there be continued conversations if, if something needs to change or they were to need those buildings back? And that gives us time, you know, to have that conversation now. If we do feel like that, you know, there's a potential for a new building, but that's just not feasible at this time. So this seems to make the most sense, but yes, two to three years was, was our timeframe that we, we wanted to secure for this. And it's existing, existing programs, teen center, YVC, are the existing programs just relocating?
Is the armory facility out? Would there be any use with that? Is that?
At the, at the Raw.
The armory, would that building be?
That, we would vacate that.
Okay.
The armory.
I just want to make sure.
That would be another discussion once, once this is secured and, and we're given approval from you all and the school, then that discussion would be tapped.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion in the second. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl Lamboyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number 13.
Consider approval of the appointment of Mike Brawley to the Street Improvement Advisory Board to fill the unexpired term of Marsha Wiseman, commencing upon appointment and ending on January 31, 2027, or take other necessary action.
Ms. Hilton Flannery.
Yes, Mike Brawley is very interested and approached me, wanted to be involved in this and I think he'll be a good fit for her unexpired term.
Got a motion. Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in the second on item number 12. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl Lamboyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, that was item 13 and not number 12. My apologies. No residents have signed to speak to us tonight. Item number 14.
Consider an executive session to discuss and take possible action on the following. A, pursuant to Section 307b2 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 95, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. B, pursuant to Section 307b2 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Local Number 2465, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. C, pursuant to Section 307b2 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the International Association of Firefighters, Local Number 57, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session.
We'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion in the second to go into executive session. Roll call.
Patrick Cale.
Yes.
Pearl Lamboyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery. Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, we will now go into executive session. All of those who are not part of that session, you may be excused. We are in session. Thank you. Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Tracy McGee. Tracy Whoos.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
Lamboyati Craig.
Here.
Patrick Cale.
Here.
Thank you, Mayor. This is item number 14A, pursuant to Section 307b2 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes. Council did convene an executive session to discuss negotiations with the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 95. An appropriate motion would be to approve the MOU as discussed in executive session.
Do we have a motion?